January 7th, 2014, meeting of the Jackson City Council Order. And if you will, please rise and we'll ask Councilman Scott Conner to lead us in an invitation and pledge.
Please pray with me. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you today giving thanks. We're thankful, Lord, that you allow us to live in a country that we can celebrate the birth of your son. Lord, we ask that you extend your wisdom, compassion, and love down to these council members and this mayor, that you may guide our votes to do us best for this city. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Let Jesus be the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think you can show all council members present, item four, approval of minutes of the December 3rd, 2013 City Council Meeting. Council members have a copy of those minutes. If there are any additions or corrections, you can hear those now. If not, we'll just accept those as submitted. Item five is invitation to public comment. If there's anyone present who'd like to be heard on any item under new business, if you'll make it known at that time, we'll be sure to call on you and give you an opportunity to speak. We have no proclamations this morning. Item seven, under first reading, consideration of ordinance to amend Title VIII, alcoholic beverages, Chapter Two, concerning beer. Lewis, you want to, you want to present that if you would?
Ms. Reedy in my office has did the research and the writing on this. What we've tried to do is to streamline the process, make it more, make it easier for us to know who we're dealing with, and for example, have a better background check, have a better system of knowing who is actually the owner, be able to get information from the applicants as they are applying, as opposed to waiting until there's trouble and then researching it later. And I'll be glad to address any specifics, but we'll say we have worked with the members of the Beer Board, both at the Beer Board Sessions, show calls, hearings, as well as the administrative staff on how things come in. And I think with this has been a consensus we've been working on for probably six months of improving the process.
Okay, any questions from council? City Attorney. Councilman Love?
A couple of questions. One of the items on there that was stricken from the original was that all members of Beer Board serve without compensation. Do we plan on starting to pay the Beer Board members, or are they already being? Do you know the answer to that question?
We thought that that was an issue that would, that y'all could do whatever you wanted to about that, but we removed it from that.
Okay, so that's going to be left up to council to make the decision.
I mean, that's a compensation issue, not a beer license issue.
The other, the question on there is, it covers manufactured beer. Is home brewers for personal consumption, are they exempted there somewhere, or are we going to be overseeing that? Or is it just for, for sale?
We don't, I don't think we regulate manufacturing. And I, bounce with it, I thought Ms. Reedy had the flu, and I don't know, but I don't think the Beer Board, let me say it this way, when someone wants to manufacture beer in Madison County, they don't come to the Beer Board and ask permission. So we regulate the sale, package sale, sale on the premises.
Okay, what specifically says it, or manufacturer in the sale?
Well, and like I say, I didn't do my homework on that one. I'll be glad to look at it and check, but what we were trying to address is there are some places that want to manufacture and sell on the premises, but the process is different. And I'll be glad to...
Okay. And the last question then is the section on certificate of good health, we deleted that entirely? Is there any rationale for doing that?
You know, it's funny how you look at old laws and you find stuff that's in there. No one knew why that was in there. No one was enforcing it. We checked around other cities, nobody did it, so I don't know why it was in there.
Okay, any other, any other questions from council?
And just some clarification. I know the hours are 12 to 6:00, but in the event of New Year's...
No, there was...
I mean, okay.
We've got two different legislative proposals.
Oh, this is the other one.
This is the first reading over sort of the general rewrite of mostly of the...
I'll ask that question when we get...
All right, I'll have an answer.
Okay, any other, any other questions or comments from council? Before we get a motion, let me just conduct a public hearing. If there's anyone here who'd like to be heard on this matter, either speaking in support of or in opposition to the passive issue ordinance, if you'd let it be known now, I'd be happy to call on you. Hearing known, we'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion for approval on ordinance on first reading? We have a motion as second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item two is consideration of ordinance to amend Title III, Municipal Court, Chapter Two, Court Administration. That's mainly concerning collection of fees. That's second reading. Council approved that on first reading. Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Have a motion as second.
Yeah, we skipped one, man.
Okay, we'll go back, we'll go ahead and finish that one out, and we'll go back up to number one. And we have a motion, do we not? Second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, going back to item one, consideration of ordinance, rezoned property located on the north side of Christmasville Cove, adjacent to Park Place West Commercial Development, from RS1, single-family residential district to SC1 planned unit commercial development, district containing 1.15 acres, more or less submitted by Gary Taylor. This is the second reading. Council approved on first reading. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion to council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Going down to item three, it's consideration of ordinance to amend Title VIII, alcoholic beverages, Chapter Two, beer and BYOB. Any questions from council?
Yes, okay. I know that the hours are 12 to 6:00.
The prohibited hours, yes.
The prohibited hours are 12 to 6:00. Just for clarification, if it is a New Year's Eve party whereby the object is to stay till after 12:00, without amending this, could we be sure that there would be understanding of a New Year's Eve party? And perhaps if the group broke up a little after 12:00, they wouldn't get in trouble?
Yes, you could do that. This is what I think, is that the police department, New Year's Eve, have a lot of things to do, and standing with stopwatches outside parties that are causing no trouble is probably low on the list.
Okay.
I talked to Major Corley about that.
Okay.
I think that we have speed limits that are 30. I don't ever see anybody in court for a drive in 31. So I think it's a tool, and how, how the tool is used, is it just as important as what the tool says. But you could, if it gets to be a problem, come back and make an amendment later for a New Year's Eve exemption to 1:00 a.m., or any other thing, but I hope that answers your question.
It does, and that's a question from one of my constituents, so hopefully that answers that.
Any other, any other questions from council?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, but they would be addressed to Captain Corley if you could. Not that I don't want to ask questions, you, Lewis.
Listen, I appreciate it.
Good morning. I just had a couple of questions. It states in the ordinance that we have found that based on statistics from JPD, there's a higher incidence of crime between those hours. Can you give me, give me an idea of how you got those figures and what they are?
Over the past several months, we've had an increase in violent crime and thefts and other types of criminal activity at locations, business locations, that are allowing this type of practice.
Mm-hmm.
And that has been a trend that we have seen over the last couple of months.
Okay. And you said that's over the last couple of months?
Well, the last, oh, since this past summer, and even earlier than that, we've actually had shootings and robberies and things.
Right, okay. And I guess the biggest issue, and Mr. Foot kind of alluded to it, was the enforcement. How do you plan to enforce it? And can you give me a scenario of what that'll look like?
Well, as we discussed at last council meeting, this type of thing is going to be something driven on information that we've been provided. This is not something we're going out looking for, but if we, if we receive calls or receive information that this type of activity is going on, obviously that's where we're going to respond. And then enforcement activity here is generally a citation. And depending on what the situation is, if the, if the officers that are on scene have reasonable belief that it's going to continue after a citation, then the event will be closed.
Okay. And so I understand it correctly, the individual that is on the premises would be cited as well as the business owner, or how would that work?
Well, correct. As we would do now, like with perhaps maybe a establishment that didn't have a beer permit that was selling, then the management that is on scene at the time would receive the citation.
Okay, so both could, could receive it possibly?
That's correct, possibly.
Okay, thank you. That's all right.
I'm probably going to ask the same question that Councilman Brooks asked, a different way, just so I can...
Sure.
...understand it. It's going to be complaint-driven? You're not going to go actively look for parties or look for...
It's going to primarily be, yes, complaint-driven. There's, there obviously could be some times when we, prior to an event, would get information that this was going to be something that would be a BYOB-type event, and, and maybe go beyond and into the prohibited hours, and we might go to, to check it. But I'm more than likely probably complaint-driven.
It's also related to commercial activity.
Right.
If you've got some guys over for a Super Bowl party or late night at your house, it's not, it's not a commercial activity.
One of those situations where you have the intent of the law versus the letter of the law?
That's correct.
Any other questions, council? No, they're approved. Have a motion for approval on second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous. Eight members in favor and one voting no.
Thank you, guys. I've noted, new business, presentation by the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police to the City of Jackson Police Department, awarding accreditation under the Tennessee Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Chief?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you, sir.
Morning.
We are honored to be here this morning on behalf of the Jackson Police Department and an activity that's been ongoing for a period of time. It's an activity that's indicative of a lot of law enforcement agencies across the state of Tennessee, a program that is administered, was developed by the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police. Presenters are here today from our association. It's my honor and privilege to introduce to the mayor and council and to the members of the audience, Executive Director of our association, Ms. Maggie Duncan. We're glad to have her with us today. Even humbled that she took the time to be here in lieu of the weather that we're subject to, and in lieu of the timeframe, had she, she had to get up so early this morning to be here, but she's accompanied by her son Neil Duncan, and we're glad to have them with us. And my dear friend and brother in law enforcement just north of us in the city of Martin, Tennessee, Chief David Moore. David is the president this year of our Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police. I'll now turn the podium over to Chief Moore.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Gist, council members, it's an honor to be before you this morning, and it's really an honor and privilege to congratulate you for your police department's accomplishment, reaching an important and much coveted milestone. Much like a college degree for an individual, accreditation for a police department is the culmination of reaching many small goals along the way. And today, being awarded with the much coveted accreditation is just acknowledgement of those efforts over the last couple of years. What does accreditation mean? The department cannot progress through the process successfully without becoming intimately familiar with all, all the policies and procedures, both current and the new ones that will come Accreditation means that not only is a policy what we say we're going to do, but the proofs that have to be provided through the accreditation process is indication that we do what we say. Your department now can firmly stand on solid ground, knowing, and you as a council can know that your department does what it says. There are several things that are very important. Our departments must maintain annual updates, checks, and balances to retain the accreditation. It's an ongoing process, as our accreditation managers will readily tell you. Keeps us on a continual progressive trajectory of best practices and professional policies. Finally, Tennessee Municipal League is going to give you some relief on your liability insurance for the number of police officers that you have because of this milestone that's been reached. Joining me today is, as Chief Kendrick mentioned, is Maggie Duncan and Neil. Maggie is Executive Director of Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police. On behalf of the TACP, we congratulate you, Chief Kendrick, your accreditation manager, Major Corley, and Sergeant Jackson, for all the work that you guys have done, your command staff, some of whom are here, and your entire police department, several of whom I see sitting in the audience today, for the outstanding work you put forth in attainment of this standard of professionalism. Congratulations, Chief Kendrick.
She was traffic. She didn't have a problem doing it. Yeah, I got you. She didn't take the power. She can be what she wants.
Guys, everyone needs a Maggie. I assure you of that.
Well, one of the council people said that she was in her former life, a traffic cop.
She may have been. But anyway, it's an honor and a privilege on behalf of our agency to have accomplished this, to Major Corley, Sergeant Rodney Jackson, and for their efforts and actions. And it took the whole of an agency to do this. They talked about the, the cost as far as the liability, from what I understand, I think it kept to fray about $13,000 in costs to the city of Jackson by us reaching this milestone, so we're very, very proud of that accomplishment. Thank you so much.
Very good, Chief. You want to recognize our, while you're up, to recognize our graduates?
December the 19th of this year, myself along with a number of other officers from the Jackson Police Department, with a heart bustling with pride, drove to the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy to witness the graduation of eight of our most recent, well, we just recently hired 10 officers in September of this year. Eight of those guys were required to go to the academy on December 19th, they graduated. We were there at the academy and hearing the guys call from Jackson Police Department as they walked forth and received their certificate of, from the academy for having successfully completed the program. I was thinking about how excited we were to be the members, to be there and to witness to this, and I'm thinking, you know, I've never taken our new hires to the council and even introduced them to council, or even introduced them to the audience that was gathered, so I thought, you know what, I'm not going to let that happen again. We're going to make sure that from now on, for all of our new hires that come into the agency, we're going to bring them to council, and then, you know, ultimately then by bringing them to council, we're also going to be introducing them to our community. So what I'm going to do is call the guys off. One of our 10 is not with us today. His name is Adam Rogers. Adam was recently just an officer who returned to the agency. He had worked for us a number of years and left and came back, so a lot of you guys may be familiar with him. First officer I'll introduce is Officer Jason Blankenship. Second officer, and this guy was a commissioned officer when he came to, is Officer Troy Cannon. Third officer I'll introduce to you is Officer Cody Chisholm. There's a lot of things that are, that are ongoing while these guys are at the academy, not only academia, but they also firearm proficiency, physical proficiency, driving proficiency, and so forth. Officer Cody Chisholm had the fascist time on the driving course and was recognized for this one at the academy. Officer Harvey Deline. Officer Deline was recognized at the academy for having the fascist time on the obstacle course. This is a tremendous accomplishment, guys, been there, done that. Officer Joseph Hale. Officer Hale was recognized as the president of the 17th, 100th graduating class of the Basic Police Academy at the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy. Also, Officer Adam Hilliard. Officer Darrell Listonby. Officer Wesley Moore. And Officer Terry Trout. Officer Trout was also a member of the Honor Guard while he was a cadet there at the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy. We're very proud of these individuals and their accomplishments in the 10 weeks that they spent at the academy. One thing I noticed that I'd like to share with you, and this was their graduation program of that particular class, the last thing is a notation by President Calvin Coolidge, and this is what it said, "No one is compelled to choose the profession of police officer, but having chosen it, everyone is obligated to perform its duties and live up to the highest standards of its requirements. That is our desire to do so for the mayor and council of this community and for the citizens of this community to be the kind of agency you guys would be proud of." And these men are indicative of that. There was another feat that I was to accomplish, Councilman Buchanan had told each one of them, and I was going to give them a $10,000 signing bonus this morning. But that's in the mail, so I'm sure they'll be receiving that soon.
Chief, thank you very much. Congratulations, guys. We welcome you to the City of Jackson family, to Chief Moore. Maggie, thank you all for, for being here and being present for this very special time for our, our police department. Item three is consideration of settlement of litigation as it relates to ADA, and this will be a revised consent agreement that council will make a determination on.
Move for approval?
Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four is the recommendation of the mayor's salary review committee, and following that would be the city council salary review committee, and at this point, I'll turn it over to our vice mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to recognize the people who served alongside me on this committee, and I think they may all be here this morning. First of all, Councilman David Cisco and Randy Wallace, myself, and Jimmy Cole. I see Jimmy back there. Is Mal Matthews here? Mal Matthews was the other member. And I just want to say that we do appreciate your time and your effort. You had quite a bit of data, research data, to look at and appreciate so much that you were willing to do this and reach a unanimous recommendation, so thank you very much. The committee held three open meetings that were highly publicized through the local media. At the first meeting, the committee requested the mayor's staff to collect information that they felt was very important in helping them to reach a decision. At the second meeting, the mayor's staff shared the research data, and we shared that with the council at the agenda meeting. They had collected the data from various staff members, had done some of the work, and then they had also contacted MTAS, and they helped a great deal with the research data. They reviewed this data. Tammy Buchanan is here this morning and later, if the council has any questions that they would like to ask of her, she'll be glad to answer those. But basically, the research data included information concerning mayoral duties, competencies required of the office, the effects of inflation in the 10 years since the last adjustment made to the mayor's pay, the period of time without a raise, and a comparison of the salaries of government officials in comparable cities. At the third meeting, after thoroughly reviewing and analyzing the data both as a committee group and then the individual members took it home with them and pored over it, we came back a few days later, and each one was prepared to offer a recommendation of what they thought the salary should be to be comparable with other cities. Those recommendations in order of the amounts were as follows, $122,000, $125,000. Two committee members submitted recommendations of $130,000, and one submitted a recommendation of $135,000. To reach a consensus, the average of the recommended salaries was calculated, and that came out to be $128,400. It was suggested and agreed by the committee to round the figure up to the median salary of $130,000. The committee voted unanimously to make the recommendation of a salary of $130,000 for the person elected mayor in May of 2015. And at this time, I do make the motion that the council accept the recommendation of this committee.
Second.
Have a motion by committee approval, obviously, that the motion itself. We do have a second for that resolution. Is there any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And thanks again to the committee. Let's go ahead with the resolution, shall we? Okay. The resolution to reset the salary of the person elected mayor in 2015 is in our packets as well. It was prepared with assistance from MTAS to ensure appropriateness of the wording. It simply outlines the procedures followed by the mayor, city council, and salary committee members in selecting a committee and in the council's process in making the recommendation. It validates that we did follow the guidelines of the Jackson City Charter. It also makes clear that this resetting of the salary will go into effect after the person elected mayor of Jackson in 2015 takes an oath of office, which would be July 1 of 2015. And at this time, I make the motion that the council approve this resolution.
Second.
Have a motion, the second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
You want to go ahead and continue with item six, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. Some of the members of the city council pay review committee are here this morning. I'm not, I'm not sure, they may have bailed out on me, I don't know, but let me, let me recognize those folks, and if you're here, you know, raise your hand. Kathy Leatherwood, Brad Little, Esther Mylum, and Doug Roth. They were an excellent group with whom to work. They took their task very seriously, very objectively. They devoted a good deal of time comparing the pay of city council representatives in cities across Tennessee and surrounding states. Our goal was to determine if the pay the Jackson City Council is receiving is fair in comparison of pay of other individuals serving other cities in the same capacity. Again, the mayor's staff and MTAS staff provided the data that the committee members requested at the first meeting, and again, these meetings were very open to the public, publicized, and all opinions and ideas were welcomed. There were two additional meetings at which time the committee reviewed and analyzed research findings, and the council has that data that was reviewed. The committee agreed that using data that linked council pay to city populations was a research approach that could be easily validated, and they selected that approach. The first method of comparison utilized by the committee was to establish an independent scoring of cities in Tennessee. Cities with similar populations to Jackson were given a score, which was derived by dividing the pay of the city council representative by the population of the city. There were eight cities in the sampling. There were Cleveland, Johnson City, Kingsport, Franklin, Collierville, Hendersonville, Bartlett, and Jackson. In this list, Jackson ranked four out of eight cities in the sampling. It was noted that this is slightly on the high end of the average. To test for validity, the committee elected to do a second comparison of just cities with... of just cities with sixty thousand populations. There are only three in Tennessee that have sixty thousand populations. It was decided that that was too small a sampling. So we included three cities in Arkansas to make the sampling larger and therefore more valid. The cities in this sampling were Franklin, Johnson City, and Jackson in Tennessee, and in Arkansas, Conway, Springdale, and North Little Rock. From this, the committee calculated that the average pay in these comparable cities of six thousand, I mean, of sixty thousand population to be six thousand, three hundred dollars per year for city council members. Jackson's salary is six thousand per year, and this was a difference of only twenty-five dollars per month. The committee concluded that our recommendation is in line with the city council members in cities, our compensation's in line, with city council members in cities with similar populations to Jackson. Therefore, it is their recommendation that the city council pay in Jackson remain at six thousand per year. And I make the motion that the council accept this recommendation.
Okay, the committee recommendation will be the motion. Is there a second to that?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members voting in favor and one against.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item seven is consideration of bylaws of the mayor's advisory council on domestic and sexual violence. And I think we have some folks here, Darrell and Captain Holt are here. If y'all would come up and just go over with the council basically what we're trying to do and why. Thank you all for your efforts on that.
Morning.
Well, the vision for an advisory council on domestic and sexual violence is to bring together the entities in the city who are involved in different ways with the issues related to domestic and sexual violence in Jackson. Bringing them together to look at systemically what the issues are and what strategies we might be able to recommend for addressing those issues. And then, as there is a need, creating specific task force aimed at implementing some of those strategies to really get at the heart of the domestic and sexual violence issues in Jackson.
We have some tremendous resources in Jackson for responding to sexual and domestic violence. One of the impetus of this committee and the advisory committee will be to look more toward the prevention side and also working collaboratively with peripheral agencies that have been involved with sexual and domestic violence.
Any questions from council? You all will be familiar with the foundation of this. I mean, very similar to what we did at the NED to give it charter and bylaws to have it where it can be governed on a yearly basis. And appointees to this committee will be submitted to council as a recommendation for council vote, just as any other board or commission member?
Move for approval?
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
A second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, thank you all. And I think the next, I think the next item is to appoint those initial board members. And will you all want to relate to council how that is broken down as far as their terms? Mike, if you would. Not necessarily each and every one of them, but just to kind of give an overview of?
There is a correction on your bylaws. It's twenty-four instead of twenty-one. There was a typographical error on number of appointees. The appointees will serve for a period of three years. Once we get to the initial appointment period, the idea was to have eight on each staggered, each year that would be reconsidered or replaced on the board. And when we start, the twenty-four will be split down to three groups for one year, two years, and three years of service. That way, as we complete that, we'll be staggered in our future three-year appointments. And we'll make those determinations with the group of which of the eight, which eights are going to be which ones when we start meeting.
Okay. Council has a list of those initial twenty-one members. I'll be happy to read those names if you like. Otherwise, you can just look at them. I think we have resumes on each of them, so?
Move for approval?
Have a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you all, Darrell, Mike. Thank you for your help. On the Jackson Recreation Parks Board, we have the reappointment of Sam Joyner.
Move for approval? Second.
A motion for approval, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And also for the Jackson Downtown Revenue Finance Board, the reappointment of Monty Jones.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Council, please vote.
Vote unanimous?
And item nine, our budget amendments this month?
Good morning. We have two budget amendments this month. The first one is for the act grant that the Jackson Police Department has received for two thousand and thirteen in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-nine cents. There is no match requirement on this grant, and this is to cover overtime for traffic stops.
Move for approval?
Motion for approval? Second discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
The second amendment that you have before you today is an amendment for capital for the city hall building in need of roof repairs in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Amendment is being done to the capital budget and funds will be pulled from fund balance.
Question?
For a motion?
Question?
Yeah.
I apologize, Mr. General Review. What repairs are we going to do to the roof?
Mr. Dawson, you want to discuss the repairs to be done?
Okay, any additional questions to that budget amendment? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
A second. Discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Item ten is consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Vote unanimous?
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.